Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. See you guys always quiet down at just the most appropriate time and then I know we're ready to go. Welcome this evening. And Mr. Snyder, if we can have roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Carlson?
Here.
Mr. Glynnis?
Here.
Ms. Grossak?
Here.
Mr. Hess?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
And this evening we have a very special young man. Caleb Warren is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then if you would, please stay up here. If you want to come on up.
And you the mic? And the flag is there?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's nice to see you. Tonight we have a very special young man here, Caleb Warren. And I had a chance to talk to Caleb a little bit before the meeting today and he said, yeah, sometimes Mr. Bishko has a tendency to gush a little bit about his students. But that's only out of extreme pride. And Caleb is a very special young man and Mr. Bishko certainly wrote some beautiful words about him. So tonight, Caleb, we're going to honor you this evening and we have a proclamation for you here, but we'd like to read it to you, if you don't mind. The Mayfield -- there you go. The Mayfield City School District and the Mayfield Board of Education present this proclamation to Caleb Warren, Student of the Month from Excel Tech. Recognizing Caleb Warren, whereas Caleb is a Mayfield High School senior and a Mayfield Excel Tech student enrolled in the Visual Art and Design Program based at Orange High School. And whereas Caleb Warren has earned a 3.84 cumulative grade point average and demonstrates impeccable attendance. And whereas Caleb Warren has overcome difficult personal circumstances and excelled by doing it. So far Caleb has been offered over $200,000 in scholarship monies to pursue his artistic talents in college. And whereas Caleb Warren is a fine example of hard work and success, he exemplifies a love of life. His teacher, Maureen Cavato, says, "He has such an excitement for all things he chooses to do, whether it's a new art project, his brother's birthday dinner, or a day off from the bagel shop." He is so well-respected by his classmates because he is such an open and honest person who makes insightful and generous comments. As a matter of fact, the bagel shop's an interesting thing because there's a woman standing right next to you and I'm wondering if you know what bagels she orders when she comes into the shop. Do you know what kind of bagels she orders?
No.
It's a pumpernickel.
A dozen pumpernickels.
It's a pumpernickel. It's a pumpernickel bagel.
Nobody orders pumpernickels.
Say that sometimes.
Nobody orders pumpernickels.
I know. Except me.
Now, therefore be it resolved, Caleb, that on behalf of all the members of the Mayfield school community, Caleb Warren is named the Mayfield Board of Education Student of the Month for Excel Tech on this day, April 24, 2013. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And see how well he does under pressure.
Congratulations, Caleb.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you.
Congratulations today.
Thank you.
Glad to be a part of this.
Yeah.
Good evening. Is it -- if it's okay with the board, can I come out?
Oh, absolutely. You can actually even take the microphone.
My name is Nate Bishko and I am the Director of Excel Tech. Very pleased to be here. Couple side notes. Caleb was selected out of several students who were nominated by their instructors. And for the record, I found out after he was selected that he was related to a board member, so I want to go on record in saying that. And he is a fantastic young man. I'm very pleased to present tonight and I literally just got back from Washington DC. I'm very inspired and I wanted to also publicly thank Dr. Kelly and the Board for allowing me the experience of the EPFP Institute for Educational Leadership at Cleveland State, which allowed me to go to Washington DC for a policy seminar the last four days. I have come back extremely invigorated, excited about the work that lies ahead of us, but also very tired as I drove six hours and then ran home, pressed a shirt, and came up here for the meeting. So anyways, I wanted to talk about Excel Tech and Dr. Kelly through his leadership. He and I sat down and I constructed some goals for our team and our students. And my goals actually go over three years and I'm going to share some of those with the Board. But basically, a little background on who we are, and before I go into that, every good teacher has visual aids. And so I brought a few of my friends along to at least give you a sense of what we do and what we're all about at Excel Tech. So basically, at Excel Tech, we are busy producing the future policemen and public servants in this country. We are producing the future auto technicians in this country. We are cultivating the future computer programmers that'll be leading the technological advancements in this country. We're also busy producing the future artists and gallery owners for America. Busy producing the future engineers for this country, along with leading the charge on reinfusing the medical war with our future doctors and nurses. We are also busy creating future builders in terms of electricians, plumbers, carpenters. We have future entrepreneurs that we continue to cultivate through our business academy. Future salon owners and cosmetologists. We are also busy producing the future web designers and graphic artists that'll lead this country. In addition, and along those lines, we produce the future music and video editors. We are creating future environmentalists for the United States of America. And finally, and obviously last and apropos, the future teachers of America. Now, these young people --
[applause]
I have to say a few brief words about all of them and then I'll just recognize them by name. I remember when I was 17 or 18 and quite honestly, one of the last things I would want to do is come to a Board of Education meeting on my own will with no incentives, but it speaks volumes about the great kids we have and it's a testament to their teachers and just what we produce in terms of our students. So I did want to quickly recognize Richard Lyle, Dan Erda, David Williams, Caleb Warren, Mike Mailing, Teresa Eisler, Jay Kohlzauer, Alex Weinberg, Valerie Gregorts, Rachel Calacchio, Matt Thomas, Jared Smith, and Mitsuki Fukumachi for taking time out to come and be my visual aids today. Thank you, guys. And as we talked out in the hall, you are more than welcome to stay and receive a civic lesson on Board meetings, or you are free to leave. And thank you again, guys. I owe you pizza. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And one more quick note about Caleb. Earlier, one of the stats that Dr. Kelly said was -- very nice touch, Jared. That's solid.
Mr. Bishko, I can see that they are learning your charm.
Solid. Be still my heart. Thank you, sir. One last note about Caleb is that Dr. Kelly indicated that he is -- it's $210,000 to be exact that he's been offered at this point, still undecided. And he is going to have to leave very soon because why? He has to go to the high school and do an interview for the Kim Yerga Scholarship to receive even more money towards his education. So again, he's just a great young man. So, real quick, and I don't want to take much time, but I want to talk about what we do at Excel Tech and one of the phrases we sometimes use is, "What the heck is Excel Tech?" And so we're a nine-school consortium. Those are the schools listed that comprise our student body. And we have 22 programs that comprise all of Excel Tech. You don't see actually 22 because within our programs are kind of subdivisions, but every one of these, I could probably do a five to 10-minute presentation on the great things that are going on at each one of these Career Tech programs. Now, I'm going to just show a two-minute clip. This is one of my favorite clips. It comes from Patch Adams and it kind of captures, I feel, what my vision for our team is at Excel Tech. So please enjoy.
May I come in? If you bend your medial collateral ligaments, place one talus in front of another, I don't see where you'd have a problem. Of course, if there were a news story covering this event, the headline might read, "Small Brain Enters Room."
What's the answer?
Oh, you're another one of those bright young fellows who always know the right answer, aren't you? Welcome to real life.
They're four fingers, aren't they?
No, no. Look at me. You're focusing on the problem. If you focus on the problem, you can't see the solution. Never focus on the problem. Look at me. How many do you see? Look beyond the fingers. How many do you see?
Eight.
Eight. Eight. Yes, yes. Eight's a good answer. See what no one else sees. See what everyone else chooses not to see out of fear, conformity, laziness. See the whole world anew each day. The truth is, you're well on the way. You didn't see something here besides a crazy, bitter old man. You wouldn't have come in the first place.
What do you see when you look at me, Arthur?
You fixed my cup. I'll see you around.
Now, I don't know. That just gets me going. That inspires me and there's so many analogies you can glean from that clip. What I like about it and what I always like to compare about Excel Tech is when he speaks about seeing beyond the problem. You have to focus on solutions and not the problem. And in education, we tend to sometimes get caught up on the problems. For one of that's, you know, a student who's misbehaving. We want to talk about the kid and the behaviors. We don't want to talk about some of the factors that may be causing that. And, you know, at Excel Tech, I mean, I just -- we pride ourselves on seeing beyond the fingers and focusing on solutions because as we all know in this room, particularly from our administrative team meetings, there's a lot of things being thrown at us at the state level. And so whether it's at a micro level, you know, with that individual student, or the macro coming from the state, we always want to focus on solutions. And I think our team at Excel Tech, we do a fantastic job of doing that with keeping kids in mind. And so I hope you enjoyed that clip. It's one of my favorites. So in designing our three goals, I asked the staff for some of their input and this is over a three-year period, I have to add. And so the first one is, we want to increase programming by adding a minimum of two programs by the 2015-2016 school year. There's a lot of factors that go into increasing or adding programs. There's -- obviously, Mr. Snyder, there's money involved. There's salaries. There's costs for equipment. There's transportation. You have to get it approved by the state. So this is a two-year process that you have to get a program pretty much up and running, also finding a location. And so we're in the process of looking at some of the Career Tech programs that are aligned with what the Bureau on Labor Statistics have in terms of job projections coming up in the next decade. And so hopefully, again, the goal is to have two new programs. We want to increase enrollment for all Excel Tech programming by 5% each year with a target goal of 950 students. It's a very difficult thing and I'll tell you why, because every school district is experiencing a drop in enrollment. And what we did is, I'll just tell a brief story. I was at a staff meeting and I -- we were talking as a staff, how do we increase numbers? Because that was one thing I have been pounding into my staff and they've been fantastic in their response. And so somebody had mentioned, well, we don't have somebody that could just be full-time recruiting. And now, and I know Kay is here and I saw Kay and she does an amazing job, but that's not the only tool in her toolbox. And so she can't devote full-time to recruiting. And so I said to the instructor, "How many students are in your class?" And they might have said 20. And I said, "You have 20 student recruiters right there in your room." And so by their leadership, what we did is, we sent students out to set up in cafeterias at all the member schools. And they created billboards and those kinds of things and they went and we had our students out there recruiting. And the numbers are coming back and I'm just so excited because our class of 2013, our current seniors, we have 395 students. Our class of 2014, we have 398 students, so that's our current juniors. Our current sophomores, who we are still enrolling and getting confirmation contracts back, we're at 439 and that is without counting CBI and also losing one of our programs. Our CNE program is no longer going to continue. So we increased 10% and that's not even the full numbers. And again, I've said this, my staff knows, I hammer them about the Earl Weaver quote. And Earl Weaver's a great manager for the Baltimore Orioles and he always said, "I'm not a great manager. I just surround myself with great people." And that's -- I always say it to them and that's the reason why the recruitment is where it's at right now and why our student enrollment has increased. Finally, our last goal is we want to improve, collaborate, and cultivate partnerships with the area colleges, businesses, and community leaders. Excel Tech is required to have an advisory council. And as of last year, we were not represented on the advisory council by any of these entities. And so we went through great pains to revise that. We have developed a -- continuing to develop a great relationship with Lakeland and Kihauga Community College, which actually houses some of our programs. We've had an articulation day where we've had folks from Lakeland come in and sit down with our seniors and say, "This is what you have to do to get your articulated college credits." We have local businesses represented by Progressive, Goodyear, university hospitals, the owner of Alpha Park. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention by name Andy McCartney because he is Mr. Mayfield and he's been a terrific asset. He sits on the advisory council and also actually has taken in one of our students for an internship through CAD. But so we're well on our way in improving. We also hosted the Mayfield Alliance Meeting a month ago and that was the first time Excel Tech had done that. So I think we're doing a great job, but we obviously still have a ways to go. I have three more slides. I want to share some data with you and this will really get me excited and I hope it gets you excited, too. This is the cohort graduation rate for the state of Ohio in 2011. And what you see is the -- so Ohio's graduation rate was 79.3%. You see CTE concentrators. And what that means, that's kind of an EMIS term. And that means a student who has had one full year of career technical education course credit and is enrolled in a second year. And now I know some people may say, "Well, wait a second." Students in, you know, all the statistics show that in ninth grade is kind of your cutoff year and dropout and dropout retention. And if they get past ninth grade, you know, the chances are much greater that they're going to graduate. Well, I agree with all that, but obviously the numbers show they're even much, much, much greater to the tune of 15 more percent that they'll graduate with when they become a CTE concentrator. And this is just another statistic for CTE participants. These are students who have just had one course credited on their transcript throughout their four years with career technical education credit. And again, the number is 11% more in terms of a graduation rate. Second last slide. This one really, we talk so much about the achievement gap and this one really hits on the nail on the head on why CTE is important. When you look at the gap between disabled and non-disabled students, our students who are on IEPs, the graduation gap is so much less. Here's a statewide -- oh-oh. Forgot it's a smart board and I'm not that smart. So students with disabilities are here and non-disabled students are here in green. Then look at the gaps here for concentrators and participants. Again, it's just one more example of what Career Tech education does for students. And I'll end with a couple more statistics that are specific just to Excel Tech. Again, this is called Excel Tech by the Numbers. Nine school districts and nine high schools with, again, 22 programs and we're all over. We have programs here at Mayfield High School. We have Ms. Cavato's program at Orange. We have programs at Beachwood. We have programs at Chagrin Falls, at Kihauga Community College, at Lakeland Community College. We have a program at the Botanical Gardens. We have an entire environmental education center that you all are well aware of out on County Line Road. So we're our -- and Aurora High School, we have a program. So we are spread out so much over northeast Ohio. 93% of our students who -- now, let me back up. This number 93%, Federal Perkins Accountability Measures require us to track our students one year after graduation. And so as I always like to say, this is a great selling point for moms and dads because not only are we going to guarantee that we graduate them, we're going to guarantee for the most part, we get them out of the house because 93% of them go to college, they go to the military, or they're immediately employed. Another success and a tribute to our staff that they're not just living in mom's basement right after school. They're going on and doing things in a positive manner. 100% of our programs have students who attend colleges and universities. There's not a program we have that doesn't represent students who come out and go to college. 469 years, geez, that's a lot of years, of career technical teaching experience. I want all of our staff members who are here, Excel Tech staff members, to stand, if you would. And again, I know some of them, because we are so fragmented and it's so hard to keep us all together, but I thank them and I could shower them on and on with praise about how they do a great job of making me look good, honestly. And I am eternally grateful to them for that. Last couple that really get me excited, 60 newly-inducted members of the 2012-13 National Technical Honor Society. Dr. Kelly was here to welcome that last week. And the requirements to get into the National Technical Honor Society are the same as National Honor Society. You need the 3.5 cumulative GPA. However, you have to have a 4.0 grade point average in your Career Tech program. And we had 60 of them. I mean, that's just, that's fantastic. 839 tech prep college credits earned by the graduating class last year. We had, I believe, 438 students graduate last year from Excel Tech. And that number can only go up. It can't go down because students have usually two years, depending on the college, to obtain their college credits. And then obviously, my favorite number is, this is the amount of scholarship dollars that are seniors and were awarded and accepted last year, which I am anticipating is we're going to surpass that this year with less students. Another testament to the great work our teachers do with our kids. So that's Excel Tech in a nutshell. Any questions from the Board?
No questions, but it's an absolutely phenomenal program that we have continued to be very impressed with and I'm really glad that a lot of staff members were able to be here tonight because it isn't always an easy thing to come to a board meeting late in the evening.
Indeed. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to present. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
More scholarship interviews. Scholarships are recalling.
We'll be good audience for you, John.
Okay. No, I have no doubt. Good evening, everybody. Good evening. First of all, thank you to the Board for the opportunity and Dr. Kelly and Scott for the opportunity to present this and also thank you to Susan for all the support in the development of this kindergarten through first grade technology curriculum. So I am John Rizzo, ICT Coordinator for the district, and this is Jan Carlson, K5 Integration Technician. I don't know if Dan had --
[laughing]
Today, I just want to provide an overview of what this kindergarten through fifth grade or first grade technology curriculum is. It's going to be a very basic format of a what, why, and how. Just give a description of the program, why we bother doing it, and how we developed it and are implementing it currently. Well, this is not voting. The K1 Technology Curriculum really is a 12- to 20-week course framework to build basic foundational technology skills in our youngest students. And right now, it takes place in both the classroom setting and also in the computer labs at each elementary building. And for the first year that a teacher is part of this curriculum, they are paired directly with one of four tech folks from the district. So it's a strong coaching relationship that we establish with the teachers and we help model the curriculum and we work together to develop their skills so they can take it from that year beyond. If you break it into three large categories, the curriculum covers three categories of skills, which the first of which is technology identification. And this is really hit home for the kindergartners. And what we like to do is take a step back from always thinking that technology means a computer and start to really look at it a little bit more broadly from the technology, a little broader concept. And define technology as something that, you know, we get into activities where we compare and contrast natural and man-made objects and start to define technology as something that just helps you do a job more easily. Once we cover those skills, we move into the next area, which is basic computer interaction. This is where our little ones are starting to learn how to manipulate a mouse, left-click, right-click, use the keyboard. So once we sever that one-to-one coaching relationship, this thing has some legs and can be sustained over time. The lessons themselves ramp up over time, which you would expect. They ramp up within each grade level and then they ramp up from grade level to grade level. This is just a visual to show that this is within that project-based application skills area and specifically at the topic of report writing. And you can see, starting in kindergarten, very basic skills of what is technology, all the way up to their typing complete sentences in the lab. Then we move into first grade. There's some overlap. They start building where they left off. And then ultimately, they're typing a report on a topic. I included second grade. It's not part of this K-1, obviously, but it's in the works. And you can see that eventually they'll be hopefully embedding some data, going into Excel, embedding that into a Word document, things like that. So you kind of see that progression of skills. So why did we do this? Simply stated, to prepare them for what we know is a technology-inundated world. But more specifically, we received a lot of feedback upstream, so to speak, from the middle school, high school teachers that really was, you know, kind of surprising that they were getting students that didn't have some of the basic skills. And that leads to bullet point two, where you really can't move towards using technology for higher-level use if you don't have the underlying basic fundamental skills. My goal always is to not just teach technology for technology's sake, but to have it be a support for something greater. And in order to do that, they have to have the basic skills. Originally, the third bullet point there, the park assessments, which are looming in, I think, 2014-15, it wasn't necessarily a primary goal when we started out, but it's become a real driver behind this project. Those are going to be online state assessments that all the students will be required to take on a computer. And what we don't want to have happen is the first time a third grader sits down at a computer is to take a state test. We really don't want, we want to eliminate those factors that could negatively impact their score and make sure that they're able to function and score as best as possible. And this is just an example. I grabbed these prototype questions, math part prototype question. And you can see that this is a third-grade level question and they have to drag the tiles down to the bottom garden there to make a certain percentage or certain fraction of the garden filled with flowers. So it's kind of funny because I actually did this one and I struggled. But I struggled with the math. I got the drag and drop.
Good to know.
Yeah. But if a student, you know, they may know the answer, but if they're struggling with the mouse skills, you know, it'd be unfortunate that they miss it because of that. And this is the ELA, English Language Arts prototype question. There would be an accompanying passage that the student would have to read. And they'd have to drag and drop sentences into those boxes. So again, we want to make sure that they're able to do that as seamlessly as possible. So finally, how, how did we implement this? And Jan's going to talk more about that because she really was the how behind most of this. But we followed a pretty basic instructional design process, developed it using Common Core as a guide, using state technology standards as a guide, and really our own collaboration as a guide, our own what-do-you-think-they-should-know kind of questioning. We piloted it at the buildings, one grade level at a time for a year, refined it through the pilots. And then finally, once the pilots and all the refinements were made, we were able to disseminate it. So this year, now, all the buildings in the kindergarten level are doing it and we're piloting first grade. Next year, all the buildings will be doing first grade. So, and like I said, that, the how part is where Jan comes in, so this is a perfect segue because Jan's going to talk more about that. And she's got some really cool student work samples to show and stuff, too. Just click it.
Okay. I'm going to start with just telling you a little bit about the kindergarten course, which was piloted at Center School in the 2011-2012 school year. And as John said, we implemented it across the district this year. And it started in the classroom, as he told you, and here's some students working on a project. They had a number of activities that they completed when they learned about what's natural versus man-made. They learned that technology is another name for tools. They learned the rules for using technology as well as all the pieces of hardware. What are they called? What do we use them for? And they were introduced to their network login. Every student has their own unique username and password that they log into the computer and they learned about it. And they actually had paper keyboards where they practiced finding the letters and the numbers. And then we moved into the lab. And they went to the lab anywhere from twelve to sixteen weeks, depending on the class and how they progressed, and they stayed for about forty-five minutes. We started off with learning how to turn the computer on. They practiced their logging in and of course, their logging off. Then we moved on to mouse skills and we found a number of really good websites where they could practice their left-clicking and the right-clicking, single, double, drag and drop. And they really enjoyed that. We moved on to Word and they learned, you know, what software, what does it do for you? But initially, we really used it for them to become familiar with the keyboard. So they typed words, they typed sentences so they knew where the letters were. They learned how to make uppercase letters. They learned how to use the backspace, the delete, the enter, the space bar. They also learned more about maneuvering their cursor. One of the things we discovered is a lot of kids, they see an error in the first line and they backspace their whole report to get rid of that error. It like, whoa. So we did teach them how to use their mouse to move their cursor around as well as the arrow keys. They also learned simple formatting, how to change the color, the size, and the style of the font. As one little boy said, oh, we learned how to decorate the words. Next, we stayed with Word, but we learned how to create a document. And they had an All About Me graphic organizer that they completed that they gave information about themselves. And then they went into the lab and they typed their, you know, sentences. And usually they didn't finish, but that was okay because we taught them how to save to their H-drive. Every student has a drive on the network that allows them to save their work. And they have that drive for their whole career at Mayfield. And they really liked that, especially when we got to first grade and they got to see their work from kindergarten. So they learned how to save to their H-drive. And of course, the next week, we'd come in and show them how to retrieve their work. Once they finished their report, they were allowed to format it however they wanted and they inserted a picture. And here's an example of Jacob's report that he typed. And Jacob liked his picture, so it's quite large. And his font's fairly small, but we were good with that. But he was really proud of his work. Now, the culminating project for kindergarten is an American Symbol Report. And this was designed to address the 2014 Social Studies Standard related to American symbols. And it can also be used to address many of the English Language Arts Common Core standards related to reading informational texts, research, and informative writing. And this was really a neat project. Within the classroom, the teacher read the students a number of books about various American symbols and they did independent reading on their own. They also watched a number of videos about the different symbols. And then they went into the lab and they had a series of websites that they got to explore. Many of them were interactive and some of them had virtual tours. And they get to go up into the torch of the Statue of Liberty. They walk through the White House and through the Lincoln Memorial. And it was amazing to see them. And it also helped them develop their mouse skills because those virtual tours are tough. So after they did all their exploring, then they went back to the classroom and were grouped with three or four children. And they collaborated on completing their graphic organizer. They each had, you know, each small group had their own topic. And they recalled the information they learned by listening, by watching, by exploring, and by reading. Then they went back into the lab and typed their report. And here's an example of, I think her name's Adesua, and this is her report that she did. So it was a great project and the parents just loved it. We had a lot of good feedback about that. Now, the first-grade course, as John said, was piloted this year at Center with the plans of implementing it next school year. And once again, the first week is in the classroom. We just do some review of vocabulary and hardware and the rules. And then we move into the lab, once again, for forty-five minutes a week. And this really stretches more sixteen to twenty weeks. And right away, the students practice, you know, turning on the computer, logging in. They practice their mouse skills as well as the word skills that they already have. We then go ahead and we provide them with additional word skills. They learn more formatting. They learn about page layout, simple editing. And they also learn how to insert a table. And we do a couple projects with that. And here's an example. And they're only given the information on the top. They actually have to insert a table of six columns and eight rows. They have to label their columns. They copy and paste their animals according to the data they're given and they save it to their H-drive. And then the best part is we have discussions about the table. What does it mean? And we do comparisons. So this was a really good project for them. Next, we move on to the World Wide Web. They learn what the web is. They learn about Internet Explorer and that it's a web browser and it has tools to help them maneuver through the web. We look at a lot of different websites and we try to figure out the purposes of the websites, who made them, who's the audience supposed to be. We talk about digital citizenship that just like when you go on a field trip, there are rules you have to follow. You also have to follow rules when you're visiting the web. The culminating project for this course is an animal research project. And it was designed to address the 2014 social science standards related to living things, their basic needs, and their environments. And it could also be used for some of the English Language Arts Common Core standards. With this project, the students, first of all, we spent a couple weeks, we found five really good sites that talk about animals that are really great for first-grade students. And we spent a couple weeks looking at those sites, learning how to use them. Where's the home button? Is there a search box? If I click on something, will it open another tab at the top? Will it open a window? And they become really comfortable with the website so it doesn't hamper them when they're beginning their research. We then pair up the students and either like two or three students together. They choose an animal, they read books in the classroom, and then they go into the lab and they collaborate on finding the information they need for their graphic organizer. And it just worked out really, really well and they enjoyed working in teams. Once they complete their graphic organizer, they begin to type their report. And of course, if they don't finish it, it's fine because they can save it to their H-drive. And sometimes they forget how to do that, but that's okay because they collaborate with that. Then they go ahead and they type their reports, they format them, they insert pictures. And this little girl was so excited when she was done, she asked me to take her pictures, so I did. And here's an example of Maru's report on dolphins. So they did a really nice job. We are working on the second-grade course and we will be piloting it in the fall with the Center Second Grade because we want to see how our first graders, who have now had two years of experience, how they do. And the plan is that we will add file management to this course, meaning the students will learn how to make folders on their H-drive so they can save all the files for a particular project. They will also learn some keyboarding. They will increase their research skills. And we're thinking about adding Excel and having them learn how to make a simple spreadsheet. So we've really had fun with this and have seen really good results. Do we have any questions?
Terrific.
I think it's great that the children at that age where they're absorbing so much more than, and it allows them a really good head start, which is what your goal is. And it's great to see that happening in our district.
They have no fear.
No.
They have no fear. So it's just so much fun.
What impresses me is how you woven the learning of the skill with the curriculum, with the learning. That is, you know, you mentioned the Common Core, projects, stuff related to the curriculum. It's just really, I think that's very important and really brilliant on your part to do that.
Well, I don't know if it was brilliant, but it should make sense, don't they?
It does make sense, but yeah, yes.
All right. I'm telling you that tomorrow.
It sounds brilliant.
There you go. Thank you very much.
It is interesting how language, as well as graphically, things like that are really changing in our society as a whole. For example, you were talking about keying and keyboarding. Typing doesn't exist anymore, unless you're old.
Fill type.
But it's fascinating watching all of that and seeing where kids are going with it.
You all did a great job.
Thank you.
Great job.
All right. Next item on our agenda is community communications. This is the opportunity for people to come and speak before the board. No one had contacted us previously. Is there anyone present who wish to speak to an action item on the agenda? There being none, we will move on to president's announcements. Just wanted to remind everybody that the art show is opening on Sunday and there will be a wonderful reception from one to three. It is located in the Hillcrest atrium. And all of the beautiful artwork will be there until May 16th. If you're curious as to what kind of artwork may be there, some of previous pieces are right around the room. So there's always good stuff. It's always interesting to see what the students are bringing us this year. Next on our agenda is board member committee reports.
No committee report, but I wanted to mention, I went to the senior talent show Friday night at the high school and what a performance. It was really, really great entertainment. Glad I went again. Been a few years since I went.
And next we move to superintendent announcements.
Thank you, Mrs. Grossick. I have a couple of things. As you know, our students are involved in OAA testing. So good luck to all the students. The staff has worked very hard to prepare them, so I know they're going to do well. I just know they're going to do well. I can feel it. Also, the middle school is at it again with, they're going to support the fight against breast cancer. And this Friday, they have an event going on and there are going to be, there are several local businesses that are supporting that effort. But in addition, a few members of the Cleveland Browns will be there at the middle school Friday afternoon for the fight against breast cancer. And I particularly appreciate that as a, as just Keith Kelly, because my wife is a breast cancer survivor. So I appreciate what the middle school kids are doing again. Also, I wanted to let you know that today was Administrative Assistant Day. And, you know, kudos to all of our support staff that help us out. I know Tony had sent me a text at four o'clock in the morning, did you get Carol anything today? And so it was nice of Mr. Lord to wake me up at that time to remind me.
Well, you needed to.
Yes, yes.
That's why you put it on silent.
That's right. Speaking of the high school, just hot off the presses today, U.S. News has recognized Mayfield High School as one of the exemplary schools in the state of Ohio. And next we move to superintendent announcements.
Thank you, Mrs. Grossak, I have a couple of things. As you know, our students are involved in OAA testing, so good luck to all the students, the staff has worked very hard to prepare them, so I know they're going to do well, I just know they're going to do well, I can feel it. Also, the middle school is at it again, with, they're going to support the fight against breast cancer, and this Friday, they have an event going on, and there are going to be, there are several local businesses that are supporting that effort, but in addition, a few members of the Cleveland Browns will be there at the middle school Friday afternoon for the fight against breast cancer. And I particularly appreciate that as a, as just Keith Kelly, because my wife is a breast cancer survivor, so I appreciate what the middle school kids are doing, again. Also, I wanted to let you know that today was Administrative Assistant Day, and, you know, kudos to all of our support staff that help us out. I know Tony had sent me a text at 4:00 in the morning, did you get Carol anything today? And so, it was nice of Mr. Lower to wake me up at that time to remind me.
Well, you needed to.
Yes, yes.
That's why you put it on silent.
That's right. Speaking of the high school, just hot off the presses today, U.S. News has recognized Mayfield High School as one of the exemplary schools in the state of Ohio, and in the nation, with a bronze medal kind of rating. The metrics are sometimes a little questionable on how things are measured, but nonetheless, we're very proud. Just as impressive, maybe perhaps more impressive, is that the Washington Post also came out today and ranked Mayfield High School very high in the state of Ohio, somewhere around 27? 27, but I couldn't help to remind Mr. Lower that one of the high schools that I was once principal of was ranked one slot higher. Just a little competitive thing going on, since he called me at 4:00 this morning. Had to get even with him for that.
Paybacks.
But, so, but, so kudos to the high school and their staff and all that they, the hard work that they do with the kids. And I think that's it.
Awesome. All righty, that brings us then to our superintendent consent agenda. Need a motion to approve items A through CC. Please note that Z through CC are all addendum items.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call? Maybe?
Maybe. If I can find, is it George? Thank you. I can't change the order here, so I always have to ask. So, Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
In other superintendent business, we have, need a motion to accept textbooks and materials recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
And a motion for the K1 course of study in technology, which we just saw the wonderful presentation for?
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Roll call?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Next we have CVEC Individual Team Criteria Based Standards, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
And a motion to approve suspension?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Bear with me one second.
Sure.
Just a little bit ahead of me.
Sorry?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we move on to the treasurer's report and the financial statements for March 31st. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
And a motion for all of our financial transactions?
So moved.
Second.
Bear with me one second. Mr. Hughes, Mr. Glynis, you seconded, I believe?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
And next we have donations.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
And a wonderful addendum of further donations.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
In other treasurer's business, we move to our health insurance rates for 2013-14. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
And a motion for the approval of our 403B provider?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Next, I would like approval on the minutes for March 20th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
And a motion for the approval of excess workers' compensation provider?
So moved.
Second. Third.
Roll call?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Next we have the minutes for April 17th. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We're going at the speed that the system, did you say it had to hit? Anyways.
We're going faster than the computer.
I think so.
Awesome!
We love technology.
Old technology sometimes wins.
Roll call, sorry. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Next, we need approval on the city of Cleveland, Cuyahoga County workforce development pre-award agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.
Ms. Grossak?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
And is there any other business that we know of? I did notice the tag on our flowers, however, does say that the spring plant sale is from 8:00 to 6:00 on May 10th, so please remember to come to that as well. Didn't touch that during President's announcement, so, a post-meeting or end-of-meeting announcement. If there's nothing else, I need a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Glynis?
Yes.